Other the order to the work session for the Culver Town Council. The Culver Plant Commission and the Culver Redevelopment Commission. Or May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. For those online, this meeting is being recorded. And your participation is your consent to be rebroadcast on the town's YouTube channel. So first of all, as roll call the members. Karen, you want to call the council members to order and then we'll ask Joel to do for the.
Bill Clevinger.
Present.
Bill Giffen.
There.
Ginny Monroe.
Here.
Tyler Richardy.
Yeah.
Uh, don't you know the rose name last name?
I'm terrible with last names, that's why I'm afraid to do that.
Uh, Dan Osborne.
Present.
Uh.
Joel Samuelson.
Present.
Jerry McManaway.
Right.
Uh, Jerry Siler.
Present.
Uh, Bob Cooper.
Present.
And I am present.
Oh, sorry, John.
Yeah. All right, and Redevelopment Commission, Marty.
Ginny Monroe.
Tyler.
Richardy.
Richardy.
You're already over here.
Sarah Jones.
Not here.
And Erica James.
Okay. Please join me for pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, that's formalities of the meeting. Next on the agenda is the update from Scott Seiple.
Uh, I guess I'll start with there, is there any specific questions about where we've been or where we are? Before I get into a recent update.
Hi, this is Joel. At the last meeting for the plant commission, we had some questions still remaining about information about the water retention pond. Has anything come in news since then?
Uh, there was a submission yesterday and then another discussion yesterday and today regarding that that issue. Um, I won't say that we are one hundred percent resolved in that. Um, we are in a better position than we were when we met at this time last week. Um, there is some uh, remaining question about um, retention and uh, volumes along with elevations during those larger storms. Um, I have worked, talked to Chris McCray with Kimple and Associates, who I believe is the developer's engineer is how they would be. Um, identified and we're working back and forth to try to get those things resolved. I think we're on the same page. Um, he was gonna do some other analysis to do some storm modeling to try to to see if we can. Make that feel a little bit better. Um, I think we're in, we're in a spot that makes the plan um. Achievable, it's just maybe we can do some tweaks to make it a little bit better. Um, I will say that the other item that kind of came to light for me today when I did my review was. Um, I have asked them if if they were to redesign the bottom of their retention basin. Um, if that would help the situation, they seemed to agree with the comment, the concept. So they were gonna evaluate that, but with that, if that were to happen, I would suggest that the town ask. Um, the developer to install a guardrail of sorts around the cart path. To prevent a wild cart or a reckless cart or a, you know, if someone were to have an emergency and a cart fail, a golf cart coming around there that they don't. Drive into that basin. Um, I don't think it's intended to hold water, so I don't worry about a drowning issue, however. Um, pushing a cart or retrieving a cart down an eight-foot embankment is not gonna be an easy item and someone could get. Hurt pretty badly going down that that slope.
Thank you.
I'm sorry I neglected to uh, when we call rule mention the fact that. Mr. Richardson is here on behalf of the developer.
Yeah, I'm here, uh, I'm kind of Bert Richardson with Collins Equity Group. Um, I know that you all have been meeting on regular occasions and I've tried to maintain good contact with Mr. Dante and. Allow you all to discuss and get everything, the questions you might have and work together and. Figure out everything that you might have questions on and not be here and be overly oppressive or controlling the meetings or. Not allowing you guys to work together and kind of get some stuff worked out, so. I've always tried to maintain that with Kevin and I'm happy to be here to answer questions tonight and make sure that. Uh, we can express where we stand and how we're moving forward and the progress that we've made and discuss a little bit. Always want to be of service but not be too overbearing and kind of taking the lead on too much of the stuff. It's here with guys' questions and projects that. Try to get resolved and so we're here tonight to kind of help facilitate that.
Thanks, Burke.
Did we get all of the paperwork needed for the wetland area?
Scott, you want to answer that? Cause they submitted that with the hydraulic material on Dropbox, is that correct?
Uh, specifically which paperwork um, is in question?
Yes.
The information that you needed to be able to proceed knowing that the wetlands wouldn't overflow into the north. Um, water plant.
So the studies that were.
The studies.
Yeah.
Yes, that information was provided and that's one of those items that we're working through. Um, currently with Mr. McCray to make sure that um, that does not occur. A couple of things that have been done, there's a um, I will call it a high water overflow that's been installed that's connected to. The town of Culver Storm System. Uh, so in the event that that water level does rise, um, that drain is there to try to take that water away. It is not there to drain the wetland because we don't want to destroy that wetland, but it is there in in the event that water does rise. Um, it gives an outlet so that the, not only the water plant, but the homes near that area don't. Uh, get inundated with water and flood. That is one, one device that's been installed at the town's request that I think is there. To aid that situation. Uh, the other thing is we're, we're trying to make sure that we're being fairly conservative with the estimates on the model so that. The western wetland does not overflow north to the northern wetland and then into the water plant.
Deepening that detention was one of, one of the uh. Same measures that we're taking, is that correct, Scott?
Uh, I'm sorry, Kevin, I I didn't catch everything that you said.
Yeah, my apologies. Deepening that retention area to the western area is a mechanism that you suggested to help assist not overflowing into that wetland to the north, correct?
That is correct, yes. However, the the modeling work to determine that has not been completed.
You know how long it'll take to get that information?
Uh, I can't speak for what um, what the developer's engineer is working through. Um, I would expect that they could be able to get that done relatively quickly. Um, I just talked to him this afternoon about that at like three thirty, so. Um, he, he did indicate to me that he would make that his priority today. Um, so I would think I would see something quickly, but I don't want to anticipate or expect. Um, or answer for what his work schedule is.
Yeah, thank you.
Eric, this is Marty Osterman. When you, when you use the word conservative, I, I, I'm gonna ask you to try and translate it for someone that really is a. Uh, uh, you know, laity in this, in this area, right? I don't understand all that engineering, all that deeply, so he kind of put it in. A simpler fashion as to, you know, what are, what are we looking at, trying to solve or or concerned about them? And what is conservative in that context mean?
Um, so from my perspective, when I say, you know, using conservative estimates. Um, we're trying to anticipate the worst case scenario and not assume um. Certain things, for example, um, if if we are. You know, we have a um, infiltration rate of four inches that's been determined in the field. Um, if if we use four inches, we're assuming that that's real, but being conservative would say that we had, we were using three inches. So therefore, when we achieve four inches, where our model is still valid, however. Um, we're trying to get a number that is gonna be the maximum that it could possibly be, so we're being conservative in nature. Um, on the other side of that, if we assume that it's the best case scenario all the time. Then that might lead us to get a modeling number that would be less and then at the end of the day, it could be higher than that. We want to try to plan for the extremes, so being conservative means we're trying to hit that extreme versus being on the other side of that. And and missing the mark and then causing issues. Does that kind of explain that a little bit better?
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions?
Regarding this uh, retention. Water retention, I know with at the present, I know we're looking at Hanselman's property right there to the north of that. And as it's been in the past, the water has come up in her yard for her fences. And I think that's on the property, I know of that area that really has had any problem with water. But I just didn't know if this was looked at as far as increasing. Since it already comes up where it is now, is it retention, the water control. Really alleviate any of that or is it gonna be?
That's back to the north by the water plant?
Yeah.
What, what Scott, I, I don't want to answer for you, but that was one of the motivating factors when Scott, a few months ago, and we sat down and talked about that high water relief that he mentions. That's gonna be by the wellhouse on Davis Street and that should help that situation by moving that water off. Also, some of the, when we were talking with the developers, Scott looking at the drainage plan, some of that northern drainage area is gonna be redirected and we think that should help. Uh, but it's something we obviously are gonna keep an eye on, that, that, that was, Scott still thinks that there needs to be a monitoring of that. Is that correct, Scott? Sorry to.
Yeah, so the most recent modeling that was provided indicates that post-development, the volume of water going to that northern. Um, wetland will be reduced. Uh, however, the rate that that water gets there will increase, which is why I'm suggesting to Kevin that additional monitoring go on as as time proceeds. Um, but the, the full amount of water that's going north from a volume standpoint is indicated to be reduced.
Thank you.
The stormwater system that you were saying would be that relief part, where's that located on our end?
It connects on the, on uh, let's see, that's Main Street that runs along the, the um, east side of the development, correct?
That's right, it's gonna connect on that main, south Main Street drainage.
Right, and then, and then that's Davis Street that that comes in right by the water plant, correct?
That's right. It was sick and be Davis.
Yeah, so there's a couple of catch basins that they are um, going to tie that high water overflow to and then that connects to that storm system that's on Davis Street.
It also helps with where we're gonna reconnect that and so that it's actually assisting and it's existing concern, so it's good.
Scott, if I may, Burke again, um, just kind of talk about, uh, and you feel free to kind of pitch into. Uh, I spoke with Scott earlier today, just to kind of, I'm always touching base with him to make sure that he's getting the information he needs. I wish I was an engineer, uh, so that I could uh, sit down at a desk and try and get some of these pounded out, but uh, I'm not, uh, so all I can do is. Sit on the engineer's desk, uh, which doesn't necessarily help all that much, but provides some motivation. Um, and so we're doing that, but uh, in talking with Scott, there was a couple of things that he thought were ways that uh, we could try to help assist with the system. I wanted to bring those up so that Scott could kind of answer to those. Uh, and they're kind of improvements that uh, we're always watching and committing in the field even as. Development goes along, if we find ways that we can improve a system. Uh, that's why after the system is completely do what's called ASBelts and provide engineering of exactly what's in there. And and Scott, I told you I was gonna speak with uh, our team and see if some of those things could be done. Some of the things that could be done also is what are called dry wells, so in the areas um, in the development, we can install what are called dry wells that stay dry. And then in the event that there's a major event like this, those can help fill with water, uh, which will help to slow the rate of water to the, the storm system and the detention area. Which then helps it, helps that detention area uh, remove the water faster and not overflow the top. Uh, Bill and and the team was happy to do that, they were happy to look at a little bit of swales between some places, but always very cautious on making sure we're not holding water in open areas. Because that have, obviously has negative effects and actually this, there's a very applicable. Uh, a real life story behind that in Maple Ridge, they used those swales to try and hold water in different times as they were developing. Uh, to try and hold some water in the event that there was a high water event. That created some problems and came back and changed those swales and modified the system so that it works better. So that's a historical uh, system or historical event that is a way that this company works is to make sure that. Everything, even coming back and redesigning to improve the system, uh, will always be a forefront in their operations. Another option that Bill also brought up is raising the lip of the detention area as opposed to just going deeper. Also providing a little bit higher lip to create a little bit more freeboard. Um, so that way, uh, there's distance between the high water mark and the overflow. Uh, we could raise that a little bit so such to a point that it's not at a point where it would overflow into any basements or anything. Uh, but we could watch those two points and make sure that we're getting to very equilibrium that would not already be on the design, but it's only gonna help. With water retention and those types of things, so Scott said, you know, we, we don't know exactly what the total effect of that will be. But all those things, including widening the little basin inside the detention area, adding these dry wells, maybe increasing the level of the. Lip around the, the detention area, all those will be positive effects on the storm system. So it would not detract from its ability to work, so those are all things, uh, Scott, that we talked about in our group, uh, that we hope would. If we get to a point where we say this system is, uh, meets all the standards and is an operable plan. We'll still look to those opportunities to put stuff in to help make it even more benefit or uh, more operable or more effective in monitoring and maintaining that water. As it may happen to come in a hundred-year or five-hundred-year event.
Naive question for Plan Commission because I really don't know, but as part of the drainage plan, is the landscape plan built into that drainage plan or these two separate? Like how many trees and, you know, what are we adding in the way of green speaking to help with the drainage? Side of it and the fact that we're putting up uh, density there?
Sure. Uh, I don't prepare the uh, the landscaping plans, Alan is pretty hands-on, a pretty avid arborist. I think he had over a thousand trees and plants coming into the development, post-development, along with all the green space areas um, that are already. Uh, present, I know that there was questions about having to remove trees, I know that that was always part of the development, like you'll see at Maple Ridge or. Uh, along those lines, it'd be the same type of landscaping process that would come in through the development here. But Alan would put together that landscaping plan.
Is that part of your site plan review, I assume?
I assume. I can only assume, yeah.
I thought we, didn't we have a seventy percent impervious, so thirty percent was going to be brass and trees and shrubs, so there would be. Some way for, uh, it falls within the spectrum, if I remember correctly from the last time I looked at it. About the required green spaces for this dense of buildings structure.
Scott, was that factored in when you, do you remember the number on the pervious impervious when you were looking at the drainage?
Um, I don't recall it offhand, but I've got the report, I can look it up, give me just a second.
These are all numbers? Yeah, I didn't mean to delay, but just another, it was a report like that number. Uh, yeah. Yeah, visit that a lot. It was very early, that's why it's like, remember it asked the first time. As before, they, I, you're not talking about widening the retention pond, you're just deepening it as soon? Well, there's a, within and and Scott can probably, so what we added in, as I understand, inside the retention pond area is a depressed area even within, so like kind of a stair step. So Scott was saying if we take and maybe instead of that being like a football shape, we've got to broaden it, it'd be a little more round. Or it's just at the bottom, that little area, um, if we maybe excavate some of that. What he, and I agree, he doesn't know, we can't be for sure, but adding some of that space can only benefit from the standpoint of adding a little bit more holding space. And you obviously are combating, you can't just dig a thirty-foot hole, uh, you know?
Yeah.
So you gotta combating the, the, the depth and the width and those types of things and the benefit that you might have. It may seem like, oh, if we excavate out twice as much dirt, you'll get twice as much storage, but Scott will probably tell you that's not necessarily true. Um, so we want to excavate out or make that area as big as we could. Within reason to help store some more of the water, uh, but that's where we're looking at other areas of dry wells and things to help slow the water to the retention area. Along with that, a little bit widened, smaller area in the bottom to help as a altogether hold more water in the event of this big stream event. So yeah, it's just that bottom area, some changing the shape of the hole at all, it's just that lower area.
Okay. Yeah. No, um, forgive me for not knowing, but the drywall is basically just gonna be a. Kind of a hard wall thing, it's gonna have a dirt floor, so it will just, all the water will eventually work its way back into the tape.
Correct, yeah, so the, the idea is that it stays empty.
Yeah.
And it's got stone and things in the bottom so that as, if it fills up with water, it dissipates just like it would if it was sitting on top of the ground and dissipating through the ground. But instead of being full, it's an open space that even if it backcharges, you can have backcharge drywall so that the, the. Retention pond fills up and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong here, I'm not an engineer, but as I understand it, if it backcharges, it comes back into the system. As it comes back, it can enter those drywells as opposed to eventually going into the streets or things, so. It's kind of like that back pressure prevention to help back charging into the streets or anything like that. Which using streets as extreme water events mechanisms to transfer water is something that's done, so that's not unusual. Uh, but this would help prevent that as well. And so drywall is actually connected via pipe to other parts of the drainage, or the, yeah, okay, yeah, so it's.
Yeah.
Cause to which package you like to.
The idea, yeah, the idea is that without an extreme event, the water will just flow directly to the, the detention basin on an unusual rain event. Uh, or you might have like on it, uh, Maple Ridge here, because all of these properties will be irrigated, you'll have some regular water flow that, you know, the. Irrigation water goes into the street or falls into the sidewalks and goes into the grounding and into the, the system. Um, and so you'll have a little bit of a trickle of water, if you look at Maple Ridge, there's always a little trickle of water from the irrigation system. So you'll have some water there, uh, but in the event of a major event, then that for those drywells provide that extra capacity, so it's kind of a concrete vault. Uh, that's all capped during development, so you don't end up filling it sand.
Yeah.
And then you take the cap off and then it allows for that in the event of a major event to fill up.
About how, why are those typically?
I think there's all different size, I mean, it can be designed and built to any capacity within reason, I think, so. I don't know that there's a standard size of drywall, um, just depending upon how much dirt you have and area to work with.
Okay.
I know, I mean, I know experience I've had it forty, about four years ago, I mean, drywall. Pretty well chilled, had like a lifespan, throwing that so long, but under these new systems, the way I'm understanding this thing. It's really, you're not gonna have that problem as far as in ten years.
As I understand, the problem with drywells can be that they fill with dirt, mud, sediment and all that kind of stuff. You can take that out too, so you could come in and clean those out and later, so, yeah, so you can.
I want to make sure like that stuff in your mind down the road.
And it's basically useless now, yeah, I mean, there's uh, obviously, and then over time, there's all kinds of uh, updates and things that can be done to. Address those types of issues that comes up, so. They have one, a drywall out of Maple Ridge, so uh, that's there for those extreme rain events.
Scott, um. We talk about um. The engineering and and the final um. Things that'll be done for the major event. Um, but what happens if we have a major event before? We have all the infrastructure in place? I mean, we've, they've started construction.
So just so I understand, you are, um, you're asking if you have that major event during construction prior to full development? Am I understanding that right?
Yes, I mean, if it were to happen next Wednesday.
Well, if it, I don't know, are they, is there any active construction going on right now?
Just a little dirt moving.
Clearing the land. Clearing the land.
Yeah, so I, I can't speak for the um. Construction sequencing, but typically the, the first item that gets done is that detention basin. And the reason that gets done is because there, there will be sediment transport, even though they make the best effort. You know, with silt fencing or check dams or or other erosion control measures. Um, even the best um, construction crews can't stop sediment transport. When you have open ground, you're gonna, it's gonna happen. So if there were to be a major storm today without infrastructure in, it will react the way it probably does today. Um, you know, when you're in a construction period, you kind of have to. Uh, this is bad to say, but you kind of have to take the good with the bad and if um, the site floods out on the contractor, uh, then they've got to deal with it. Um, the, the idea behind what we're trying to do is in the post-developed situation, what we don't want is a major event to flood someone's home. Or cause real property damage. Um, whether that happens to the contractor when they're moving dirt or not, you know, it sounds callous, but that's kind of on them, they're in control at that point. Um, I think you, obviously with their um. Soil and water uh, prevention plan, um, they've got. Items in there that every storm, they have to recheck their silt fencing and their check dams and their uh, sediment transport system, so. And that's regulated by uh, the state of Indiana, so you know, those kind of things, they do, they have gone through that process and had their. Sediment water pollution prevention plan approved. Um, so they, from that standpoint, they're, they're good to do dirt moving activities as long as they're meeting that plan.
And Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, um, but I also think, cause I kind of asked a similar question of, you know. If, if you haven't built the full system, how does the system work, right? How does it fully work? Well, the, the, the idea is that the system is built ahead of the, the construction of hard surface. Well, the, the idea is that the system is built ahead of the, the construction of hard surface. So as Scott told me today, that the, the, the property basically now is a sponge, it just sucks up water. And it only gets worse as you add hard surface. Well, the first thing we're gonna do when we come in is on this, do the water and sewer with the ready stuff. The second is the storm runs right along with it. And then we start adding hard surface with foundations, concrete and those types of things. So before we create something that is a barrier to absorption, we put in the storm system. So that as we build barriers to absorption, we already have the storm system in place. And that it only gets to its maximum usage once we fully develop the whole property. So you try to keep the storm ahead of or by the end, right at the development required for the amount of hard surface that you're producing. And stopping the absorption, so that you're always capturing enough or more than enough of the water that flows. Scott, is that correct?
In a nutshell, yes.
Thanks, Burke.
Do you find that pervious impervious, Scott?
Yeah, it's about, um, thirty-seven percent. Is what is listed on the one, it's thirty-six point seven percent impervious. So that would be sixty-four, sixty-three point three percent im- or pervious.
The only thing changing, I heard Burke say that the detention pond really doesn't change shape, but what we talked about earlier, Scott, and you explained it to me. Is why you want that railing up on top, because what we're looking at is a greater slope, is that correct? Other than the two foot that was original, you said we're gonna be looking at maybe six to eight now?
Well, I would, I would envision that the slope won't change, but the depth will, based on that, so right now. The, the top of that at the location, I don't know if you guys have a, a map in there of what that development looks like. But it's along that eastern edge of the development, the, the, um. Uh, cart path that goes alongside there, well, if you come off of that just to the west of that cart path, there's about. A two to three foot drop from the top of that down to the bottom of the basin. Well, by deepening that basin, you're gonna take it from two to three feet to more like seven to eight feet. And that would be a pretty wild ride on a golf cart going down a slope that is gonna drop you eight feet. So I would just recommend putting in some sort of guard rail. Um, I don't think you need to go to the extent of putting in like what you would see on the interstate. Or, you know, one, a, a style of that, but something that if a gol- golf cart were to hit it. It will keep them, it may do damage, but it's gonna keep them from going down an eight foot slope into the bottom of that pond. And, and when I say pond, I mean detention area, because it may or may not have water in it.
And I, Scott, I meant to say, I think that's a great idea. I think they're putting in a nice wooden barrier that runs along there that might be cedar or something that. Looks nice and kind of keeps, that might just be good to kind of be a deterrent to people going down there anyhow. Uh, you know, we put a lot of fencing around the edges of property, we did that in Centennial. Um, when we backed up to a ravine, so, uh, maybe wrought iron or wood fence of some kind that we see in a lot of. Walking paths that, that towns and stuff put in, um, when you end up along a ravine or something, put in a nice wooden. Uh, fence or something on there, uh. I think that that's a great idea, and I don't think that would be a problem, might be. Something that Alan would have come up with looking at the slope too, as, as you works through it.
Yeah, the, the only thing that I had still in question on that was if there was anything in the, um. Code of plan ordinances or, or whatever in the things that the town had in place for construction standards. Um, if that slopes over a greater, um, a greater depth or anything like that, do they require fencing? And if so, what's that fencing got, got to look like? I know a lot of communities, when you have a, a, um, a pond that holds water. You know, in perpetuity, you have to fence those to keep. People from swimming in them or, or getting down in them and, and those kind of things, but I don't know if the, if the town of Culver has anything like that and, uh, if there's a threshold there.
That's definitely something I'll follow up with, uh, Steve.
Talking about children. Get to go out, get down, whatever.
And I think that's somewhat the, also the calculation on the amount of time it takes to drain. I think that's a question that towns would kind of answer by saying, it has to drain within a certain amount of time so as to prevent. Creating a nuisance and that is an attraction where it's always holding water, so the idea is to, to be a, uh. Detention, not a retention, uh, pond, so it doesn't retain the water, it just detains it for a short period of time. Uh, and moves it out, so a retention pond, I think, has to have a setback with a fence and all kinds of stuff that would be. Would be a complete. Remodel of this plan or, or any plan to be, it's a large setback because you're gonna hold water, so.
Is there a pond on the west, northwest side of that?
You mean moving towards the utility?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is.
Northwest side there, right?
There's a small, the, the, if you move to the north and west, yes.
That's naturally existing right now.
They cupped it out, I think it was a wetland cupped out back there.
Yeah, there is, yeah, with the, uh, you're talking here, right?
That's, well, back to the back, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, the only reason I'm asking, is that gonna be maintained by the HOA, the existing pond?
Yes, the, so, that, all of that property will be within the horizontal, or the condominium regime and maintained by the HOA. Unless it's a dog park.
I was gonna say, that's pretty close to the area of the dog park.
Yeah, the only property that's not within the HOA is the multifamily section here, so. With the major subdivision application, you have three parcels, this is one, two, and then three is this middle area. One and two are all HOA, yes.
Okay, I'm only asking because I know of a, a town that's having to. Take over ponds and HOA developments where the HOA wasn't getting paid and. Rather than trying to collect, it just kind of got ignored and it, then that particular pond became an issue. And I'm talking about a community that has to take over like a hundred of them.
Sure.
Uh, we don't have obviously that many in the monitor, but I just wondered where it was located and I knew there was something back there, but.
Burke or Scott, um. Another question that, um, and I, I'm just asking some questions that. I've heard people ask, but can you kind of explain in. In, in basic, and I know we have permitting and, and so forth, but, um, people are wondering, um. Why is, why is all the dirt and all the rest of the stuff being done now? When we're, you know, awaiting the, the plant commissioner and the town council. Um, I know a lot of people have expressed an interest in, you know, why, why are we moving all of this dirt and cutting down the trees? I, I'm, I'm sure you got a permit, but can you explain the difference in the permits or what that is?
Yeah, so in terms of, uh, like Scott was talking about, the soil management plan and all those types of things. That's how we maintain and make sure that none of the soil is removed from off of the property. Uh, and now, as it exists now, that's where you have the silt fences up and the analysis is done to make sure where water would flow and that kind of thing. Uh, and so that's all been applied for and approved by the state of Indiana. In terms of clearing property and clearing brush and, and doing some of the tree stuff. Um, there, that's all part of just the preparation of the land. And technically, I mean, that's kind of a, for development purposes, it's a, it's a benefit to the land as it makes it more easily developed. Um, and as it's privately owned, it's within the right of the private owner to. Treat that land and address that land as it sees fit. Now, if the town were to not approve the plan, uh, then the land is, has not been harmed or has not been. You know, treated in such a way that's been a violation of any permit or anything like that. It's just basically if you decided to go out and cut some of your own trees down. You would be free to do that so long as, uh, you know, you're maintaining safety regulations and all that kind of thing. This is no different than that, it's privately owned property and, um, they're free to do what they want with their property so long as it doesn't affect anybody else.
There was a permit from the state of Indiana?
The permit is, is in terms of making sure that there's no runoff or anything like that.
Oh, okay.
So that's what's all being maintained.
Okay.
But because there's no construction, uh, and I haven't been out there in a little bit of time, but.
Yeah.
It's always surprising how fast I did come around the corner and noticed it. There was a bunch of cleaning, they've been done awfully quickly. Uh, so there is a bunch of stuff, and I know that some people hate to see some of those trees go, and, and I know that we do too, but I can promise you, we're gonna bring. A bunch of new trees in, um, and in a couple of years, it'll all be grown up and it won't look like it did, um, in terms of. The wild, uh, growth, but it'll all have mature trees pretty quickly. It'll be irrigated and, and back to a high functioning piece of property.
I did have this salad charity, I had one person ask me if you were going to mow that area. By your silt fence, because the grass is as tall as the fence.
Uh, well, I'll make sure that, we had another property here that I got on, it said, hey, we gotta get that mowed, uh, I'll make sure to. Get that on the list. So yeah, none of the work that's been done out there is, is, requires any further permitting and anytime that something like that comes up, we, we. We are working to improve the land in preparation for an approval from the town. But we haven't done anything that's, uh, required approval that we haven't received yet.
I have a question for Scott, Scott's Don Fox of Plant Commission. We are scheduled to meet on the twenty-first. Will you have all the information you need and your final analysis and thoughts on that by the twenty-first when we meet?
I can't answer that question because I'm waiting on the developer. So as long as they get me the information that I need in a timely manner, I can more than likely have. A letter of, of recommendation or a comment or, um, whatever term you want to call that by the twenty-first, but. Until I get everything from the developer, I can't say that I would or I wouldn't.
That answers my question.
Scott, just to be clear, you've communicated to the developer through Chris correctly what is required and what is still outstanding that you would like to see?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Scott, this is John Horton, we, several months ago, talked about street names, one of my trivial interests. And I, there was, I got the impression the developer might have been doing something about those.
Yes, yeah, and we have changed, um, some of those names, I think we, um, because we had a lot of dandies.
Yeah, that was the, that was the issue.
Yeah, so, uh, I can't remember exactly what the names are, but I know that we've changed them on the plan, so. Um, I can't, I can't remember exactly what they were, but we took out the dandies, uh, or at least two of them. Uh, so that definitely, uh, has been addressed, I went back and there, there was no super rhyme or reason to that name. Uh, and so there was no problem with changing that, so, I think it was. Can't remember exactly, I know we've changed.
You actually said the last, I can't remember.
Did I, okay, yeah, so we sent it on to you.
We will have a list of those for playing commissions as well, I hope.
And I think that, you know, now that I say that, but Tom, uh, sent, uh. One of the, with Kempel and Associates, Tom sent the updated plan, and I would bet you dollars. To dimes that the new road names are on there.
Chester, uh, Chester Groot in the back has a question.
I know what to consider the general benefits to the town of Culver for this project. This is an enormous increase in, uh. For this town. Talk a lot about a lot of things, it also presents some. Pretty difficult problems like movement of traffic. Through the town. Through the.
Yeah, uh, Chester, if it's all right, because. I've been on the engineering and I've been on both sides, and to say that this is a hundred percent positive or a hundred percent negative is naive, I, we can't do that. There's a cost benefit and you'd be naive to believe that it's not. Where you weigh in is that cost benefit. Several things that in the last eight months coming on board has become apparent to me. The first thing is that the comprehensive plan the town of Culver said it wants housing. It needs housing. The second thing that's been apparent to me in the last few weeks is our assessment of our, with our tax. Tax rate's gone down, however, the assessments are going up because we have a housing shortage. That's coupled with the fact that our population is dropping. Down to under eleven hundred where we were up in fifteen hundred. Taking that into consideration, the cost of it is, is we're gonna have to look at engineering solutions for those people. But if we don't try, and I can't, there's no guarantee who's living out here, it's market-based housing. I don't have a crystal ball, but if we don't build, we're gonna keep losing housing. People, uh, uh, unless somebody can convince us that the pattern's gonna change within the town of Culver. People are buying up housing, tearing it down and building. Quite frankly, not your typical workforce market-priced housing. Now, to say that this is the solution can't be guaranteed, but it's a start and I think we can manage it. I think it gives us the best hope to be able to do things downtown to help our businesses, and we've had meetings with the downtown owners. And they have expressed the fact that they do appreciate the housing on the south side because it allows. Greater balance to the town, which is out of balance with the academy, having such a strong presence on the north and east side of town. They, they actually appreciated the fact there wasn't seventeen access. Because it allowed traffic to move down Main Street for them. Now, I've said the whole time, we are gonna have to engineer, south side of town wasn't designed for this. But it gives us the opportunity to design it, and the way that we structured the TIF ponds. And the ability to recapture through redevelopment is gonna give us an opportunity to build that infrastructure. Three hundred units on that piece of property looks like sixty acres spread out. It, it, that's the truth, I, I, I understand that, Chester, and that's an opinion, but what you're looking at is proper setbacks. Right? For the condominium regime, okay? And I, and I get what you're saying, I, I understand that people can have those objections. On a, and again, not a crystal ball. What I'm doing is trying to, what, I'm looking at it and I'm not voting, so I don't have to vote, what I have to do is manage it. And I think confidently, with Scott's vetting. And the ability to be able to recapture through the TIF bond structure, I think we can manage it. It's never gonna change people who don't like it.
What traffic flow, you know, getting to ten and seventeen, which I've heard a lot about the. Well, it's a problem.
May cog, well, not necessarily, Chester, may cog indicated, the report that I saw, now you may have more detail than I do, but. For every ten cars, add three. That's horse keys. But you can stand on South Main Street and count ten cars. And you could be standing there a while sometimes, right, and about peak days of July, maybe not, you know, but. There's still room for three more. The question really is how much of that traffic? And, and, and you can also ask yourself, if it's workforce housing, those people are already here, they work, right? They just go someplace else to go to sleep at night. If we get them to live here, well then, that's the same amount of cars, right, same amount of traffic. So there's some percentage of that additional. Traffic, which is actually already here, so. If there's going to be, uh, uh, bottleneck, it's gonna be on Ohio Street, right?
Correct.
And, and the question is, well, what do we do about it? And I think, I think Kevin's got a good answer.
I, I, and I, and I actually agree with what you're saying, Chester. You're, it would be absolutely.
You're, it would be absolutely false of me to sit here and say there won't be a problem, but it, it's hard for me to say to what extent the engineering has to happen. All we have is probabilities and estimates. I don't know who's living in these units yet. One time, somebody tells me, this is the argument I've heard over eight months, and I'm just reporting back public opinion, when it's convenient to say it's only gonna be rentals, nobody's gonna buy these things, it's gonna be academy rentals, they're gonna be here part-time, and they're never gonna be lived in, but yet we're gonna have a massive traffic problem. I get both sides of the argument out of convenience, and I'm not trying to be flippant. I understand people's resentment and fear for the change. That's what we're expressed a lot of times, is that change, and it's nervous because you don't know where the problems are gonna exist. To say that on the backside of this thing, you can't just stick your head in the sand and say, okay, it's built now. That's the precise time we've gotta keep taking data as they online it in phases, is to collect the data as we come to realize what the reality is, not probabilities, and make the adjustments. One of the things that we did during the bond negotiations and structuring is that we were trying to be responsible with the TIF reclaim into the redevelopment. We wanted to make sure that we were trying to get enough money, not just to pay the bonds, but also be responsible for the engineering changes that were gonna happen. That includes putting back into the engineering system the wastewater that is being consumed, about 16% to 18% of our capacity. We wanna reclaim that as fast as possible so we have future development, we're not taxing, which we're not even close to maximizing, but it would be, it would be irresponsible not to reclaim it as fast as we could. This gives us the opportunity to do that in other projects that Karen and Bob have planned for. The second thing is, I think you're right, Chester, I don't know what the streets are gonna look like. I would argue that it's, there's an existing problem in July already on West Shore. This might give us an opportunity to address some of those existing problems. But I, I, I'm speaking, that's exactly what I'm trying to say, Chester. It's not, we're trying to reclaim money into the redevelopment, that's gonna be allowing for that infrastructure payment, so we have that opportunity. That's the best we can do.
I have a, this doesn't seem like a related question, but it, it isn't in my, what's left in my mind. What is the actual question the planning commission has to decide the next time we see people? We're not being asked whether we like the aesthetic approach of the thing, right? The question is whether we approve the site plan? Is that the, the precise legal question we're being asked or recommended?
I think you phrased it well, and that's why the setbacks and the, I, I get where people.
We don't have a design element to our zoning ordinance.
Right.
We don't have design standards. We developed design standards that said you can't have a turquoise blue garage door. We wouldn't have one on, well, got torn down, but we would have had one.
We wouldn't have one when we had one, right? Yeah.
Yeah, but we don't have design standards. We've height standards, setbacks, et cetera.
So the, the question that we're being asked to certify to you is, based on the information we have, does the project, as, as we've been, place of information we've been given, satisfy the requirements that we have on paper? Now, we're not being asked about whether the type was, was a good idea, or whether we wish that penders were still there, or 6,000 other things, but I wish penders were still there, but that's just me. It was a great sound, and, and there were free desserts on top.
To add to what you said, though, because planning commission does have to look as far as what, that's, well, anyway, not just the site plan.
But does it fit into the comprehensive?
It fits into the comprehensive, I guess, and, I mean, we look at a lot more than what people think. It's just not a piece of paper you look at and say, it's written right. I know in my past experience, I'm learning more, probably you'll never know it all, but I know with what you brought up on that, with what you were talking about, this property right now, it's on S1.
C2.
C2.
What?
C2.
C2.
When we annexed it 10 or 11 years ago, we zoned it then, the C2, all of it. I think we got rid of all S1s in town, if I remember right. Yeah, I think there were a few S1s that when the county did the zoning area, and like if a parcel or farm had like S1, an ag, we took out the S1s, and we did the same thing in town. I think the S1s, most became C2, but don't quote me on that because we have C2 in weird places. R2, I'm sorry, yeah, sorry, not commercial residential two.
That was gonna bring up, because I didn't know.
Yeah, R2.
My different situation, but with it being under R2, you know, we were talking about that, running under plan, we've got eight foot setbacks on some of these, that own, which, which require various circumstances, but we may get a, but I'm now being told that we don't have any decisions or anything on that. We're just either approving or disapproving, yet we're, if we approve, we're approving with it not fitting the zoning standards or ordinances. So how does that work, I guess, as far as true? I mean, are we just overlooking the ordinances that, or R2? And, you know, it just puts me in a position that I don't know exactly what we're actually looking at if we don't look at ordinances.
Yeah, I don't know if it follows a, I don't know how the condom many, what is it called?
It's a condo regime.
Right. So.
And that suspends the zoning ordinance?
Well, it doesn't suspend, it changes the setbacks on it by.
I mean, I. You look at me, and I'm an attorney, but I represent the developer. No, I'm not. What my advice would say, that you have an attorney, and you can talk to them, and I don't, I'm gonna withhold, like, I have a lot, I have a lot to tell you.
Yeah.
But I'm not going to, because I want you to talk to your council and have them, which I have talked to Sean and Jim and.
Yeah.
And.
Position thing, or.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you're not, it's not a PUD, which would follow.
It's not PUD, which actually.
Condos, condos, townhouses, at home, on the same zoning.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Multi-living, which is under R2, and even the apartments part, that goes, would fall under the same thing, because, I mean, people are attached, but I mean, your apartment, are they attached?
Where they're all.
Permit under R2.
Apartments, condos, dormitories, single, two, M and D plus houses, all permitted under R2.
Right.
It's all permitted.
But then, I guess there'd be a question for the attorney as well, as far as, we approve something that, or the orange was needed 20 feet between E and E, or two is one thing, and it's only 16, is that gonna, I mean, where does the approval come from? You just ask him as far as he was saying, to hear the first, I know we've been aboard over other things before, so I mean, I just don't want to put you put in that same position, or a town to put in that same position.
Let me just ask a question at this point. Does anybody have any more questions for Scott? Scott, we're, we're not, we're not hearing anything. You have any additional final comments?
Um, the only thing is, I did see an email come in while we were talking with an updated hydraulic report, so I will review that, and hopefully that will answer all the questions and have a complete analysis for the meeting on the 21st. I will route that through Kevin, and if needed to be at that meeting, I can more than likely do that, it just depends on schedule.
Okay.
I've got one question, and that would be on Tuesday of next week, should that meeting happen, and on Thursday of next week, does Scott plan on being here, or are we gonna be doing this by phone again? I just think it would be helpful if he were here in person, that's my opinion.
What, what time is that meeting held?
6:30.
6:30. Fourth meeting is 6:30. Right.
Because we could also attend, and if we need to.
Sure.
Or.
But it's not here.
That's the one that's gonna be at the administration building.
Will your guys on Thursday be there too?
Or is that John?
Regular. That's what I'm asking, is he gonna, if he would be here? Because I think, I think it would help if people see.
I apologize. Uh, council's meeting on Thursday be here?
Be here? Yes. As far as we know.
Karen, is there anyone online?
There are people online.
Anyone online have a question for Mr. Seiple?
Who's that meeting?
I don't think we do. Scott, thank you very much.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Scott.
Barry, you were asking for information from Sean, our attorney, right, about the setbacks and the regulations on that, in terms of the zoning, that, that's a question definitely worth asking along.
And I guess to add to that, would it require a different zone?
Yeah, absolutely. Just make sure there, the setbacks are in line with the, the zoning, is what the question is.
Because if that's.
We can ask, absolutely get that established tomorrow.
I assume that Sean, is Sean attending the plan commission meeting Tuesday?
He has plans too, yes. And I'll, again, I'm gonna get that answered beforehand, and what I'll do is if it's okay with the planning and everybody in here, I'll just email the answer prior to, and then.
That's great.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll try to get that secured by, at least by Friday or Monday, hopefully. It just depends on Sean, I can't speak for it.
It does seem to me in terms of what's really before the plan commission is, are the engineering concerns met, and are the legal concerns met? And frankly, our personal preferences is to whether it's record, it's final siding, is, we don't have to like it, but we have, we have an obligation because we took a note that followed the law.
Right.
And that law says criteria is met, so if the law says it's not met, that's another story.
I, I do like the fact that you brought Sean up, though, because we've heard from the engineering standpoint, like Don said, let's, let's confirm it's legal.
Yeah.
And that what you.
That's a good idea, what you put it there.
Like, repeat what smart people say.
Your question is a good question, too, because I know when we ran into the PUD issues, where the state PUD statutes override local, I mean, that was the argument they made in the one case, so I, I don't know what the case is for the condo thing and the same situation. We don't have a, a local ordinance that defines that the way we do, we, we thought we did with PUD, but as it turns out, it needs to be rewritten, or, I don't know.
We're still looking. Anyway.
Yeah, which is a good thing, I know.
Process. Same person. Actually, Don kind of brought this up. We've never really seen an artistic rendition of what this is, we've seen how it's platted, but we've never seen how anything's gonna look. So, I mean, what, what are we talking about?
Yeah, I mean. Um, well, and that might kind of give me, I'll answer a couple of questions if that's okay. So, to the street names, we have, go back here, we still have Sandy Harbor, we now have Willow Park Drive and Alpine Drive, as opposed to Sandy Pine, it's now Alpine, so we changed those around. In terms of, what's the fit and finish of the exterior of the units going to look like as far as artistic renderings? I think that, you know, there's examples of around town of maybe what's been done in the past at Maple Ridge, but I think that the best rendition of what you would have is really Centennial Crossing, where you have a mix of some newer looking, what's called board and batten or vertical siding, which is kind of a newer look on it, on siding and those types of things. It's all for the traditional housing units. I think that there's gonna be a color scheme more towards a little bit more gray or blues and those types of Sandy Harbor, those types of nautical type looks, but all that's not really within my purview. I know that we're probably gonna have to have the quarter stone on, on the fronts and around the sides and different things with the houses, so you may have more than quarter stone on some of the single tenant houses, you know, so runs along the fronts, or maybe around the garages, all stone, different designs that we're going to plan on those. On the apartment buildings with the stairway areas, those would still be stone, like you see it, Centennial, all very much along similar fit and finish of, of Centennial, but color options are always, are always within Alan and the team's kind of purview. But I think that, that a lot of that, those quarter stone and all that is a, is a staple that's not gonna go anywhere, so you'll have a lot of that same look. That'll be, the, you know, the vinyl windows and all that stuff of high quality, quality architectural shingles, all that stuff comes in, but in terms of drawing a picture and showing what the, the property would look like, you know, I don't know between now and the 21st if that's something necessarily get done, but some, I think to some end, really put all of our focus on the scientific side of it and making sure that we get through some of those things.
I just wanna add something, I'll give it up.
No, no.
I think he brought it up, I mean, I was thinking more toward conditions that the plan commission would use, heights, you know, as far as, whatever you know, because we get into the zoning situation here as well.
Right.
But I would.
All of.
I mean, I don't care if you think size, I, I, I may not like it, but I can't.
Plymouth, there's no pink, I got, I think there's a pink. Yeah, so Plymouth has the same height restrictions, and all of the apartment buildings out there are, I think it's 32 feet or 31 feet at the top of the heap, so all those meet those standards, and they would be the same design here, so there would be no height restriction or concerns in terms of building anything too high or anything like that. But there's no, yeah, and that's part of the building permit process, so as we apply for building permit, we have all the schematics on there, but the structure, if you drove by, you would see on Centennial, it'd be the same kind of structure, sizes and those types of things for the apartment buildings. In terms of, you know, I obviously want the council to, to seek their counsel and have that discussion in terms of what you're looking to approve, what the question is before the council, and I, I know Sean does a great job, he did it at Plymouth, and we worked well with him there, and he'll be, he'll do a great job. I can tell you, we have a large amount of legal analysis behind the design here. We also, knowing the concerns in Culver, we brought in Steve Snyder and said, we wanna make sure that we follow every single letter to the law, and that the design completely matches and is completely approved, it's within the bounds of the requirements of the ordinance. So we have a very strong backing behind the design on our side, in our opinion, but you obviously have counsel for the reason, so take him up for those things, too.
My second question is, you know, what happens, you know, this is the bad case scenario, what happens if this is, you go ahead and do this phase one, which is 200 doors, correct?
I don't think it's all, there was, well, phase one and two, phase two, so, one and two of residential development.
Yeah, so what happens if it doesn't quite meet your expectations, and you only have a 50% occupancy, and it becomes a point where you say, we gotta do some, what's plan, what's a contingency plan if you don't occupy all these units? Is there a possibility that this becomes low-income subsidized housing?
Absolutely, that, under no circumstance, we have zero low-income housing.
I'm just asking what.
Right, and analyzing, I think it's important for any business to analyze all types of business opportunities, and there's been absolutely zero thought process of developing any low-income housing anywhere.
Well, I'm not saying you're starting to develop, I just, can it turn into that?
I guess, I guess legally, could it, sure, would Alan and Chris consider doing that? I think the chances of that are zero, so, but from a legal standpoint, do you say could legally something like that happen? There's all kinds of things that can happen within legality, but there's no consideration that that would happen, or, I mean, with partners and those types of things, no thought process of doing any type of low-income housing. But it's not even a design model that's under consideration.
I'm just saying, if it failed, I mean, if you didn't, it's a say.
I think it would be.
You only had 30% occupancy, and you said, okay, wait a second, we gotta do something here, we gotta, we gotta have a plan B.
And it'd be more likely that there would not be further development, that rather than develop something else, and that's where it's considered in the development agreement, economic development agreement and the TIF bonding, to say, if we decide not to continue to develop or build more, then those TIFs aren't real, and those TIFs aren't, bonds aren't issued and those types of things. There's a sunset on those opportunities, so.
Point nine.
Yeah, so if, if that were to happen, now, I can tell you, in Peru, Indiana, we've been open since February, and we're at 70% occupancy. Yeah. So if, if that were to happen, now I can tell you in Peru, Indiana, we've been open since February and we're at 70% occupancy. So we fully, we fully believe that you'll have. And go somewhere else. There will be a portion of these that are purchased by people who are here on short-term basis, who are here over the summer. It's going to be no way to avoid that. But I think that the project is, I've kind of looked at it as comprehensive and measured. So it's comprehensive in that it provides multiple types of housing at a market rate, which was number one need in the comprehensive plan. Multiple styles of housing and we need market rate housing, number one. This fits that model for, for many times. I think it's dynamic in that it provides, it's measured and then it provides that type of housing at a rate that the market would demand. So then creating a whole bunch of units and trying to fill them up as fast as possible with anybody who can put a $500 deposit. It's measured to follow along with what the demand is. I think all in all, as the project is designed and finished up, I, you know, I get frustrated with engineers and the time that it takes to get some of these answers done. And we've had some uncomfortable conversations to, to get those things done. But all in all, as we get the whole project put together, I think that the design and everything will really be a little bit nice. It'll be what Culver needs and it'll help to preserve Culver for what it's always been. It's a nice, small town where people can live 12 months out of the year and some people come and visit in the summers. You know, you are seeing some full-time resident decrease in population. You're also seeing an aging, you know, market in your community is aging. So by having this housing, you help to combat the aging population and the, the 12 month of the year population. So by doing that, you help keep Culver vibrant in December as well as in July. And that, I think with this project, I know it seems large, but it helps to preserve that, not change Culver, but helps to preserve where it is.
As long as we have the, the plan commission and the redevelopment commission of town border, I know we have people online, Karen? Okay, who's ever online, first of all, please identify yourself.
Are you asking them to ask questions or do you want them to like let you know who they are that are online?
I like them, I like them, if they have questions, I'd like them to be able to ask a question.
No one is unmuting.
No one's unmuting.
I was just saying there were a couple.
Yeah, yes.
Ginger Rogers, I'm curious, okay, what do you project the fee will be for the apartments as 1200 on offer? And then when you speak of condos, are you talking about the homes themselves?
The condominiums are the, you know, the freestanding homes. So those are each, as opposed to, you know, condominium building of a large town. Individual homes are actually condominiums.
And how much larger is this project going to be than Centennial? Because I go through Centennial a lot.
Yeah.
And within one block, there are six huge apartment buildings. That's 72 units within one block. That's a lot of房子.
The number of units in Centennial is about 225, 224 total units, but that covers 25 acres. Whereas this is 60 acres. So you have a lot more units, but a lot more land. Or not a lot more units, you have 75 more units, but you have a lot more land here spread out. So you don't have everything as close together. So a few more units and twice the land essentially. So.
As I look at it, I just see one square to the other, to the other, to the other. I don't see any green space. You might see it as green space, but I don't.
Yeah. And I, I can understand that, that thought process too. When we developed in Peru, if you ever get a chance as you drive through there, it looks like this. And as you drive through, you see this space here between these buildings is, is bigger than it looks. I mean, it's, you know, this building is, I can't remember how long, but this is, it's 48 feet. So it's another 200 feet between here and there. I mean, that's a large green space. And maybe it doesn't look that large when you're looking at a small space here. Maybe you kind of go towards some artistic drawings, maybe you could kind of help to show that. But, you know, and that's all green space, you know, another section here, this area here is a lot bigger than it looks. Just looking at, and I can understand you're looking at boxes that say, it doesn't look like much greens.
That's what I'm referring to, how tight they are.
Yeah. So, you know, around out here, yes, this is another area where you're going to have a lot of green space between the two. So as you drive through Centennial and you see the distance between behind the apartment buildings, the distance that's green there.
Yeah.
Imagine that, this is bigger than that between the two apartment, the center apartment buildings. So this green space is, this is the parking here. But this area is going to be really pretty large of, of green space. And that's where we can put in underground, some of those dry walls and things to help with moving water. You know, and I can say this, this percent. So this section here, I mean, you have a good 150 feet, 200 feet of all yard green space as you come into the development. This is all green space. I think that from a overhead view, it looks like there's not much, but there is more than, than what you might think.
60, 6, that's why I asked the numbers because it is hard to see it. But 60 over 60% is going to be impervious. So it's not blacktop.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Impervious is 30 and something, yeah.
We need new words for that.
Yeah, we really do sometimes, but sorry. And that's why I had a hard time to junior season it. But when I heard the percentages, it, it made more, that it has to make, so it's not concrete or asphalt. So it has to be either dirt or green space.
So 60 acres is the total block size and 37% is pervious. So 20 some acres is green versus 40 is built.
Or just. 20 acres green, 20.
So two thirds.
Okay.
Barry, you had a question?
Yes, Don Baker, 604 South Main Street, going to be living in proximity to this development as it's built over the next several years. On my one side, I'm sure it'll be long in college before it's done. And my other side, it will probably be mostly way through high school before it's finished. So it seems like maybe a year ago, we had another site plan submitted that was 200 units. And so my question is, as the town council and the plan commission looks to give its approval or not give its approval to this new 300 unit site plan is, I would ask you all respectively to drive up and take a look at Centennial Crossing, to look at it on Plymouth-Goshen Trail, Bitterroot Drive, and to look down at it from US 30 between Plymouth-Goshen Trail and 17. I'm not opposed to this on principle, but I would ask you to look and say, before you vote on this, and say, is this what we want in our town? And if not, think about asking this developer to resubmit its 200 unit site plan that it originally shared with us when they got us to sign in with all the infrastructure improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Don.
I would point out, just as a side, and Sedante, feel free to speak up. But the total cost so far to the town of this development and planning and all that has been a total of how many dollars?
Speaking informatively, exactly, I cannot, but in essence, for the planning.
Haven't had to pay because we paid.
And the engineering, essentially the Midwestern engineering bill and the planning has been done by the developers. We've asked that of them.
And in terms of the total cost that the town has to, the total money is that the town has to go into its funds and pay to help with the project is, been asked at $0. The town is not paying any money towards the development. The $1.3 million ready bond comes from the state. The 1.3 matching comes from TIF funds, which are generated by the development itself. And the rest of the bonds are generated by the development itself as well. So the total money that the town has to pay out of its coffers is $0. However, the benefit over the 25 years or 20 years, as analyzed and it's a part of the website, the total benefit to the town or the redevelopment commission over that period of time is just under eight and a half million dollars. So over that period of time, the town will receive into the redevelopment fund, eight and a half million dollars. That many towns we've been in have used those funds today for future cash flows because the bank will loan against that future cash flow. So the town can go to the bank and say, we have a TIF bond, here's the economic development agreement, here's how the process is going to work. And the bank says, we can see what the projected cash flows are going to be and loan against that. The town of Peru took those funds and put in new pickleball courts in the park just up the way from the development. And they have those now over the, the planning because it was a 70 30 split, I think, with the town of Peru. So the benefits and TIF funds and other costs or other benefits to the town, it's, like I said, the, the document is on the town website is just under eight and a half million. So the cost to the town and money that it's going to have to pay out is so far $0 and hopefully it maintains that. The cost that the developer has had to pay is all of the costs in recognition of the risk of receiving the cash flow back over 20 years. Or I guess it amortizes it about 16.
16, 17, according to Baker Tilly's projections, but.
So the developer's got to put out the $8 million in cost for the infrastructure and then receive that back through TIF funds over 16 years. And the town pays $0, but gets eight and a half million over that 25 year.
I would come back to your original concern and, and actually couple it with Dan's, not so much with subsidized housing, but in terms of availability and market. The developer's built in a market delay clause after the first two phases, which is approximately 225 and the units somewhere in there, maybe a little less, a little more. But it, it, it leaves about 72 units on the backside of what we're calling phase three and four. That market delay is there to cause for the developer to make the considerations of developing more units. If they so choose, if it's not a profitable engagement, if it's having a hard time, I would assume that I can't speak for the developer, but I would assume they would back out. The second thing is that we also have put into the economic agreement that the town has time to review and to take a look at that. And that's with the infrastructure. So we're, there's a vetting process that happens on the backside of phase one and two. And they're under no commitment. We keep saying 300 units. Right now, the real guarantee is probably phase one and two with that market delay in place. If there's not a need, I can only assume that a market price housing developer would not build more units. That's why we split the bond engagement for the infrastructure. We, we divided those monies in apart. So we're paying for infrastructure that we get on the ground for residential. That's exactly why those bonds were split out.
And I would say, and I, I kind of offered that market delay clause to Phil Pasinda and the town as a recognition for the concern of building so many units so fast. There was a response of, you're going to throw up all these units so fast and, and people are going to flood into the town. We said, well, okay, well, if the town would like to be able to take a breath between some of these things, then we'll put that in there to allow everybody to kind of analyze after phase one and two of the residential development. We also structured the, the bond, which I think was Phil's and the town's idea, which I was fully supporting on, of having a second phase of the bond. That second phase only kicks in when development of phases, the second phase or phase three and four of the residential development is started. We had this exact same structure in Centennial Crossing and that went immediately from phase one to phase two. There was no delay in construction because the demand was there. We were filling units in Centennial as we were completing phase one and the demand pushed to just continue to build out phase two. So there was two tranches of TIF bonding, the other one in place. So it's a model that we followed before. We feel strongly about the market and that it will be the exact same way. But in considering if there were delays and those types of things, it's in the development agreement for that analysis.
And on, on, I appreciate hearing what you said there. As far as the, the delay, is there a time limit between that? I mean, I don't.
There's a sunset. I believe it's 2029.
It is 2029. Is that the day it's supposed to be completed?
No, that's the day they have to commit to start the construction of phase three and four. And then that bond is, is twilighted at that point if it does not.
It does not start.
That's exactly right. Yeah. It wasn't an open ended offer.
Yeah. And again, that's, talk to Sean and, and I mean, that, because everything I answer is obviously from my.
Yeah, Phil, Phil's got the, and we've got that economic development agreement online on the website. So you can take a look at the terms of it firsthand. It's not, not.
You know.
Sure.
And when you get those completed at that time, are you looking at the financial need for the other houses as well based upon those?
Based upon the market. Well, not market values. So the thought process in phases three and four is that we might have the ability to bring in even more homes at a lower cost point because the first phases have covered the cost of infrastructure. So because you sell some of the homes and those types of things, that creates revenue to be able to pay for the rest of the infrastructure. So then therefore bringing down the cost of infrastructure to a lot or a unit. And so therefore in phases three and four, you are going to have an opportunity to have some of those houses in the 280, 290 that are the, the most affordable that might be in the development because you cover the cost of the infrastructure. So that's where, you know, the, the first couple of phases, you're going to have some of the more expensive houses because it helps to cover the cost of that. And you have the apartments and then that helps to cover the ability to be able to bring in, you're going to have some of the affordable housing in the first part of the, the lower affordable, 290s, 310s, 330s, some of that in phases one and two. But three and four is really where you can start to see a lot of that come into play. So we believe that the market demands as we finish those, you know, obviously it behooves us to rent them and sell them as fast as possible. So we'll, we'll be able to address that demand. address that demands or see that as we.
Oh, I guess I just wanted to, the time period that we're looking at between the end of the first phase before the delay, and how much that delay might last up to when.
Are you asking what, what we think will happen, or what?
I mean, that's all we've got, actually, I mean, if you think how long it's gonna take you, like, you start right away.
Based upon market demand, zero days.
Right.
That's, that would be our.
But I'm saying as far as how long will it take you to develop the first phase?
Oh, how long, okay, I got, I, the, waiting between phases two and three, we hope is none, because market demand is there to continue. So, the, the number of years, I thi- it's in the.
It is.
I think that it's.
It's around two years.
I think it's two to, yeah.
If, if they didn't go right out of phase two, they're good delay, and they've got probably twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty six, late twenty twenty seven right now.
I know the dates are in that.
It's right there, and you're looking at maximum would be two years, and then the clock's out, and that's where the bomb there.
That's what you're trying to get.
Yep, no. I'm working from memory, but that's pretty close.
Jenny has a question.
Yeah, uh, just based on what, um, Ginger's note and Don's note about Centennial. Earlier, you were saying that we're two hundred and twenty five units and about twenty five acres there, where you're putting in potentially three hundred on our sixty acres. So if I do go look at Centennial Crossing, um, and, and look at apples to oranges, do you off the top of your head know what the pervious and previous percentages were there?
I, I don't off the top of my head, um, but I could get that number and provide that on the twenty first.
Okay.
And just so you can kind of.
Yeah, I'd like that, just because I am a visual learner when it comes to like the three D space. That, you know, looking at it on paper is a whole separate thing, but in my head, I also wanna know, what am I really comparing? Is it, is it gonna look exactly like what you're talking about, Don? Versus, is it gonna be more green space, et cetera? And design wise, sounds like it could be similar design wise, but colors might be different. Uh, so just, yeah, if we could get those numbers, then that would be great.
The separation between homes here is a little bit further than the separation between homes and Centennial.
Okay.
So you'll actually have a little bit more space between the homes, uh, and the E's and those types.
Uh, Bill has a question.
Yeah, on your market rents, and we've been doing this now for a couple of years.
Yeah.
So, a couple of years ago, market rents were, would say about eight, eight hundred to twelve fifty, what are they at today's rates? What do you anticipate?
Yeah, the, the lowest, um, rate that we have is in the senior units, and that's really held down because Alan is, uh, very sensitive to the nature of a senior who's on maybe a fixed income of social security, does not raise that rate and keeps that right around the, the. And I, again, this isn't necessarily my portion of, but the, the, as I understand, around nine hundred to eleven hundred dollar for the senior units in the senior building, there's one of those.
Okay.
Um, and then, the, 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 uh, in Centennial, I think they have, um, they have one two-bedroom that's really pretty large, I think about twelve hundred and fifty square feet or something, I think it's like twelve hundred dollars a month, but then the two-bedroom and one-bedroom are the, the thousand, eleven hundred, and then uh, the nine hundred for the, the one bedroom, one bed. All those have their own HVAC, they have their own, uh, full-size kitchen, and they have their own, not full-size kitchen, they have a, a full kitchen and washer and dryer in each unit. Uh, so they don't have to, you, you know, travel outside the unit for, for any of that, they have full full appliances. Uh, and then in the one-bedroom apartments, you're anywhere from a thousand to twelve hundred, I think, and the two-bedrooms is, is, uh, eleven hundred to twelve seventy-five, somewhere in there.
Okay.
For the apartments, the houses, I think, are somewhere between twelve fifty and, and thirteen seventy-five, depending upon the size, number of houses. If there's, or number of bedrooms, if there's a basement, those types of things.
Thank you.
There's a gentleman on the back.
G D Castleman, six forty one Forest Place.
Yeah.
Um, I'd like to know how our arbitrature zoning laws um, allow for these buildings to be so close together and so dense and compact.
I would, I would defer to your attorney, um, obviously, because any, any response that I kind of give, kind of leans towards, uh, my client. But there are density requirements that have to be met based upon the size of a parcel and how many units you can have on that parcel. And I can tell you that the analysis, it's a square footage analysis of square foot of the parcel versus square foot of the, the number of units. And we're far under that number of, as far as density goes, and that's just based upon the ordinance. Uh, so, uh, you know, that's something for the town and, um, for your attorney to kind of go through, but, um, we're, as I said before, we're, we're fairly strong on the law and, and the ordinance as far as our design goes, meeting those requirements.
Yeah, let me follow up, Dan.
Yeah.
Originally, about two years ago, your first press release stated an estimate of one ten to one fifty units. Then it went to two hundred, and then three oh one. If, explain the progression, why we went from one ten to three oh one?
I, I can't, I cannot, because I didn't necessarily provide that information, that was my client made it, put that together. Wade, do you have any knowledge or how this site plan was kind of?
Didn't you post on the town's website, I mean, when it got started?
I did, actually, it shows the progression document, why is it, it grew? What, what the likely answer is, is that they developed a market analysis and realized the need, but I don't have, I can't answer that. All I did was post what J Z, I think you're referring to, is the original, uh, release. I, I gave the documentations of how the site has matured and evolved into a larger site.
But I thought there was a letter from President Tom Councilman that, uh, gave support and stated two hundred and eighty units.
There were two hundred and twenty five, I think, at the time of that letter, if I remember correctly.
It was in the letter, I forget.
It, it was.
That letter was part of the ready grant.
It was part of the ready grant.
Based on what we thought at the time when we were applying for ready, which I believe was.
It was in the two, two twenty range, I'm comfortable saying that.
Yeah, so it is at December twenty, twenty-two, that's what the number was.
That, yes.
I believe the conversation in the summer of twenty twenty-two.
Bernie, you had a couple more.
Yeah.
And I think that part of the question, the answer also is that phase one and two versus three and four, there was phasing thoughts on what that ready was to go towards what phases.
Yeah, ready, at the time, ready was gonna be broken, like, we were covering phase one with ready, and then there was potential for phase two at that, at the time of applying.
So phase one was at two hundred and twenty units, so
Yeah.
It may look, if you look at, it may look like it grew, but really that was only talking about phase one and not including phase two. And in terms of, of an analysis of the number of units, there is due to the cost of materials, um, and only going up, and now interest rates and things, and, and the cost of all business going up, um, in order to have a house that you build and sell on a new lot, uh, at a rate of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, you have to have some density to be able to cover the cost of that infrastructure. And so, uh, when we look at trying to provide a market rate housing for an opportunity for a home buyer at that level, you have to have some density in order to meet that need, so long as you don't overbuild the density requirements of the town. And, and that's what we maintain and, and monitor to make sure we were there.
Question to the planning commission on density, I remember we, we had the maps out and we took a look at it, didn't we? And we were looking at the, the setbacks between the houses for the utilities and fire, is that? I'm having that memory, but I'm not sure, and I thought we covered kind of the setback issues at that.
No barriers required.
You remember, okay, because, and we still need to check on that from a legal standpoint to make sure we're crossing our Ts, dots and Is, but I kept having that memory, and I couldn't keep talking densities and stuff, and I thought, but we need to make sure, and I'm gonna follow up on that, but, okay.
I guess, question, and I know Kevin knows. I had asked you at one of the previous meetings, I think, quite a while back, you were gonna actually look at as far as being able to get access from the west, from seventeen.
On into the unit in terms of a design, yeah.
And I know you, I mean, you had, you'd made a comment about the cost, it's more than what.
Yeah. And Barry, I, I want you to know, I went back to my office and I thought about your question, and, uh, I wanted to review some of the things, and, and it was interesting. Um, and again, I would say, talk to Sean about this, but I went through back through the ordinance, and I thought, I, there's gotta be an answer for this question about there. Uh, and I went through the ordinance, and it actually, in the subdivision ordinance, uh, as a major subdivision, uh, states in there that it's actually a design flaw to create a design that encourages through traffic. And if we had a design that had a road that went through the development out to seventeen, would actually be grounds for you to deny our application for subdivision because it provides a through-traffic, um, analysis. And the reason behind that is that the town seems to have designed or required subdivisions to be designed in such a way to provide safe travels within the subdivision, and it could require a connection to other roads so long as it doesn't encourage through traffic. So talk to Sean about that, but it te- seems to me that it's actually the, well, it seems like, uh, you say, well, this might be a great opportunity to provide a, an opportunity to get out to, to seventeen without having to travel through downtown and those, I mean, the, the logic makes hundred percent sense, I, I, I follow that. Um, there's obviously cost and ownership of real estate and all kinds of things that come into play there. But when we look at the subdivision ordinance, it actually, or it discourages those types of designs because it encourages the rate of traffic, it encourages the amount of traffic coming through the development that doesn't reside within the development. Uh, and that's actually a negative for design standards. So, uh, but again, talk to Sean about that, uh, let's see, kind of what his thought process was, but because I just knew, it's like, I know that there's a reason why we don't want people traveling through neighborhoods to get to roads.
Yeah, you don't wanna see a semi driving through a neighborhood, or, or someone towing a boat, potentially flying through a neighborhood, I wouldn't think.
I mean, you've also seen towns with those signs up that no trucks shall have on this road.
You've got county roads like that.
Well, they're on a gate up and solve that problem.
Okay, it's getting close to, um, a little after eight.
The traffic access, you know, we're talking about free cars, ten men, whatever. But I don't know if we've actually looked at the difference between the landings, because we, we already bottlenecked there now. You know, I mean, wait, you got a boat, won't go in, you got traffic, can't come in, you can't get a truck going out. And so I, I think that that's gonna cause much of a bottleneck increase going out, which is gonna increase what comes in, I understand merchants like that. I understand that, good for business, but you got a lot of resident areas, you know, and you've got the safe free feeling house, and you're gonna turn around and double the traffic on the roads that you're making sight.
Well, it's, it's thirty percent. And, and, and that's a peak, but I'd like to, uh, I'm just providing a little bit of context
Yeah.
in, in response to that, Barry, and I appreciate the comment, I really do.
Okay, we've.
Please let me finish, Bill.
We've got some.
Fifty-four years ago, population of this town was one thousand seven hundred and eighty-three, that's six hundred people less. These are three hundred front doors, if you put two people in each one of these units, we only get back to the population we had fifty-four years ago in this town, same roads, right, same number of roads. Now, what we don't have that we had fifty-four years ago.
Used to be sacred seventeen.
Yeah, is an active Main Street, right? We had a very robust retail presence on Main Street, we don't have that today. And the reason we don't have it today is because partially because of the part-time ownership in this town. And the only way we can bring that back is more people. There's no other way, it's not better, smarter retailers, we need more people, or we don't have a Main Street. So, that is just as important to me as any other aspect of this project, is trying to save our Main Street.
I'm trying, yeah, I'm just saying, we can have both.
I'm wondering if any one.
Kind of include one by getting the other.
Have we noticed any uptick from a traffic standpoint with the seventy-two units at Paddix and Sand Hill? I never got complaints about traffic out there adding seventy-two units, some of which are kids going to the local school, right? So I would have thought, you know, we put, we put that into a part of town that didn't have those seventy-two units before, there was discussion that that could create a traffic jam at the time. And I just, I don't think we have that going on, and I'm not saying two hundred and twenty-five or three hundred won't create more, but we just haven't seen that for there.
Let's find out, and then we'll engineer it properly.
And I. But I'd also say, there's more full-timers in that development than we've seen in other, like, probably more full-timers there than we have in Maple Ridge, for example. Um, so, and more coming into town for the school and downtown area than maybe we even expected. So, I, I'd be curious to see if, if MACOD ran numbers on that, that too. Because, I mean, we did add seventy-two units right there, what do those numbers look like?
They're gonna be picking up some studies that they can fly for us when we start getting some busier traffic.
And we did have to put a stop sign over there. Um, in that development, we had MACOD come out, and they, they kind of laughed at the fact that we wanted a stop sign. Because really, there, there's, there's like, there's no traffic there except when school starts and work starts or whatever. Um, so I'm just curious, it didn't seem like we had that issue with those units.
Okay, I think it's, um, about eight fifteen, and Chris Monroe has been kind enough to bring some decadent brownies.
Yeah.
That, or, and anyone else on commissions that have any questions?
I have one for, um, the site plan that I saw earlier had, had a, um, an offset on the intersection at Tampa when it comes in, and I'm wondering, is there had any more thought given to it, uh, align that? Yeah, I think, yeah, the, there is a desire to do that. There, we obviously have limitations in the property that's owned by the, the current, um, facility that's there. Uh, so I think that there's, there's a potential for negotiations to line that up with an easement. Uh, but that's the, the issue that we have, and we have. But you remain open, you remain open to doing. Yes, yeah, uh, but it, it's not just simply up to us. Right, right, I understand there's an easement that needs free research. Yeah, yeah, and it, that's one that can get done pretty quickly if we, we, so. Weird intersections like that, you know, are obviously not, uh, super desirable, so it's always something that we would certainly be open to, because it, it doesn't affect us, uh, to have that road bumped over ten feet, or whatever it is.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody for taking their time on the various committees and commissions. I hope this has been informative, and, uh, we have a couple of, uh, very important meetings next week. So, stick around and enjoy some of the best brownies you've ever had.